So I will call Claire Allen forward unless there's someone else in the chamber who would like to testify, who did not indicate as such, or has since changed your mind. All right.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I'd like to thank, um, Counselor Presley and Counselor Jackson and, um, Counselor George, even though she wasn't able to stay long enough, um, it did show that, you know, she wanted to come in and, hear some of what we had to say and, you know, and she had to leave, um, but I do thank her for coming in for y'all, um, holding this hearing again for the 13th year. I, I have a couple of things that I do want to say, um, that other people have given to me, um, and then also some statements, um, around the B, the BBC and the IBC. I wear glasses now, 14 years. Okay, so the BBC and the IBC and, um, not getting residents on those committees, I think, that was a great, um, uh, question that the council asked. Um, that is something that we have applied, um, to be on the BBC, the IBC and the CLC, um, but we have been, um, ignored as far as getting on those, uh, committees. Um, the last time that we did it, um, we were told, and that was like Ms. Barkley from Cathedral. I think Mark applied like five times, um, uh, uh, one of the ladies over at Villa Victoria, um, who was, uh, very much involved in the, uh, campaign, also signed up, um, at least two or three times. Um, and we had been, um, ignored pretty much, um, and we were told that we did not fit into their structure because we have to believe in the bio lab period and it being implemented and going, um, forward. Um, and we, uh, could not really agree to that until some of our questions were answered and none of them were answered. So therefore we weren't on it. Um, I personally was asked by one of the federal judges, um, to create a plan, a community plan for BU so that they could implement it in the community and then community people would come. And I did do such, and BU did implement it until more and more people started coming and asking questions that they couldn't answer. Um, and so they were holding these, uh, community meetings in, um, Cathedral's, uh, high, high school gym. And there would be over maybe a hundred to a hundred and fifty to 200 people that would come each time to the meeting. But when folks started answering questions, um, they just really stopped. Um, and then they started having the meetings within, uh, not within the lab, but their office right next door. Um, a lot of folks felt confined, um, and wanted it to be more open, uh, for the people to be able to come. And, um, that's why folks do not go to the CLC, uh, meeting. Um, their last, uh, meeting on the CLC, there is a, uh, a recommendation that they've made to not have as many community people on that committee, um, because they were told it was more industrial, uh, of a process, and they felt that more people with degrees and that type of thing should be on the CLC, um, instead of more community leaders. So that was their last request, um, as the CLC group, um, that we were not able to be a part on. Um, the other thing that I wanted to, uh, talk about is of the CDC. We brought the CDC up. I think, um, it's a very important entity that we need to look at. They, as well as the Boston Public Health, will be doing their inspections and, um, will be somewhat, I guess, well, not really doing any overseeing, but will be doing a lot of the inspection and surprise inspections. We bring this up because, one, you know, with the statements that Anita Berry, um, has made, um, and some of her other comments, and then the CDC, who is supposed to be the world's premier laboratory, and they're having problems since 2003 when we started and we're bringing up issues of, um, uh, you know, people being able to do what happened as far as the mail and slip the anthrax in, and a lot of different incidents that could happen. Um, it's happened at the CDC and it's been kept quiet until just recently. But we were raising those issues a long time ago. And with BU, it's, this is their first BSL 3 and 4 that handles this type of select agents. Um, and the CDC has been doing it for years. I'm not really quite sure why BU feels as though they are infallible and our premier, uh, CDC institution, um, has had so many mistakes. I don't see how BU can see themselves, um, being its first time doing select agents, as far as I know, be able to do a better job than, um, what the CDC has done. So I, you know, that right there kind of puts you, um, it makes you a little bit more nervous about the issue because we can't trust the Boston Public Health Commission on some things that they say to us. And then the CDC, you know, the USA has pulled out like 57 different articles of where they, um, have not been able to control their safety protocols, um, and their inspections and late reporting and, and that type of thing. How do we know that this won't happen at the laboratory? And I hear a lot of things that BU says, and I hear a lot of things that the Boston Public Health says, but I don't ever see things in paper. Um, from what I understand, from the last document that I looked at, which may not be current, but still has, you know, I think still has the same, um, it still covers the same thing where the needle is more of a warehouse, um, type situation where other scientists can come and sublet space, um, to do whatever type of research that they're doing for NIH. Um, but who oversees those labs? Who oversees that research? Uh, we talked about the aerosol, aerosol lab, um, a little bit tonight, but we are very concerned about the aerosol lab. We didn't talk about the insectarium, um, and that's something else that we're very worried about. That, you know, we will have these insects within our community, um, that could easily, um, get out, um, that have been exposed to testing. So, I mean, there's a lot still that has not been answered, um, by BU and, um, we just, we just need better answers. And we need to see better preparedness from, from the people that we, you know, are to, you know, ask questions to. You know, when they asked Anita Berry, I think it was, you know, what happens if someone is exposed in the lab? And how long does it take to get to the community and how do you get it out to the community? And everybody has to sit and talk and, you know, then decide what the risks are and this. You know, with some pathogens and with some of these viruses, you have anywhere, you know, from 24 hours to 48 hours before someone is exposed and starts to feel, um, the, you know, the infection. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out within the time limit, how does that process really work? And I think that if the Boston Public Health Commission and BU, um, had paperwork that supports, we no longer can take your word on things. Uh, we need to see things on paper. Um, so we need to know what type of research are you planning to do? From what I understand, what NIH funded folks to do, it's not what BU is doing now. So we have asked repeatedly that we would like to see their proposal and what is it that they are going to be researching on, but have not gotten that information, um, as well. As far as the moratorium is concerned, um, the federal government has had a moratorium for two years and still has a moratorium on select agents. Um, and so our only safety that we can see is if you do get your lab, we're not sure about the Boston Public Health and with the Anita Berry and some of her statements. And this is not just this one time, um, but she is here. But when we talk about past incidents where, you know, some of the doctors and scientists have spoken to us, when we bring it up today, even though it was back in 2010 or 2011, well, those people aren't here anymore. They didn't know what they were saying. Now we're here. It's a whole different thing. So I'm not really, we're not still feeling comfortable with Anita Berry's, um, response. And we don't really see how two, two inspectors can really thoroughly take care of the needle, um, and as well as the rest of the labs that are within the city of Boston. So we're very concerned, um, about that as well. So the reason why we called for a moratorium is somewhat to protect us that if your lab does open, um, before we can really talk about the risks associated with it, that you, you cannot do something to viruses that would be more deadly, that would kill us even quicker or whatever the case may be if that does happen. You have to realize that we are not against science. We have never been against science. But we have to think about the what if. If you don't think about the what if, then what? So it's not as though, I don't get paid. I've never gotten paid to do this type of work as far as fighting for our future. So this is all free time. I'm the founder and, um, of the Roxbury Safety Net and the Coalition and the organizer. But we don't feel safe. And until you have better answers, until we're more involved in the process with you, I mean, even with your BBC and IBC, yes, they are scientists and they are this and they are that. But you have to realize, in order for me to organize people such as Richard E. Bright or David, David Ozenoff, who's also one of your own epidemiologists and other scientists, we had to learn everything in order to get people to be involved in our campaign to fight for our life. So I don't want you to look at us as though, oh, yeah, well, they're the residents. As of right now, it seems as though we have a lot more information than some of our elected in the state level and other levels, and even some of the people that are working within the Boston Public Health and BU. And so you need to look at us the way that we look at you. We are experts at what we do and we have studied what we said. And we have done it every day for 13, 14 years. And I don't think there's anybody here that can say that they have done that every day for 13, 14 years. So we know about this needle. We know about the science. What we don't know about the science, we get the experts and we learn from them. But we don't really, we're not really on that same page as of yet. And until we can work together, we will fight you till the end. Until we feel that there's a good bond, we're gonna have to do what we have to do to save ourselves. And for the counselors who aren't here tonight, I'm quite sure that everybody lobbied councils and made them feel all cozy and well, and nothing's gonna happen. But they need to do due diligence as well. Because when it really comes down to it and the Level 3 and 4 lab is open, a lot of that research won't come to the city council. Because they will be federal. There are some federal, um, research that won't come on the city level and there's nothing that the city can do about it. So I think the city council needs to realize that. So we're not just, you know, this is a federal facility that we will have little control over and we all know it. And I think the council that is not here today need to really think and look closely, not at the dollar bill, wherever that might come from, but they need to start thinking about their families and what decisions, when something hits the fan, what are all the counselors going to do when it comes time to do what we need to do to respond to an incident that happens at that needle? And we can't say one won't happen. We pray to God that it won't, but still 14 years later, we're still not prepared. We're still not on any of your, on any of your counts. So things need to change and there needs to be trust. And it's very hard to get it from, from BU and from the Boston Public Health. So we need to get, to get that changed. Um, as far as, uh, one of the things that someone wanted me to mention, um, that lives 150 yards from the laboratory is that FedEx itself, because when we had a hearing earlier in the years, FedEx was bringing the pathogens, um, to the needle from the airport. Um, it was top secret on which way, you know, they would go. But either way, they were going to be pass, passing through, um, our community to deliver these pathogens. But now FedEx has said that they no longer will be doing that. They see the danger in actually carrying these pathogens. So another question that we have is, how will these, uh, pathogens or viruses get into our community? What areas of the community will they be coming? We don't need specifics, but those areas need to be prepared. Cause there's a saying, shit happens. And so if something does happen, I don't want to see these faces looking like this. You know, we have to have a plan automatically. And within this 14-year time, you come to tell me we haven't been able to work together so that residents can feel comfortable? So that, so that we know as a community, we know that this is here, that is there, this is here, and we feel safe, we're talking. You know, but it, it's, it's not happening. And I think that the council needs to take a look at, look at this and not look at the dollar bill. Um, the other thing that, um, I wanted to, someone else wanted me to bring up actually, was when we talked about the fire department and the fire department, they come and the ambulance and they do their thing and whatever. But the fire chief or commissioner or whomever, at the last hearing said, and at all hearings, has said, yes, we do come to the needle, we do do whatever we do. But if there's a fire within the lab, we don't go in. So they've always said they won't go in. So who goes in? Who are the people within the laboratory that actually puts out the fires? Who are these people? Is it still the two inspectors here that, that does it? How does that part work? It's never been explained. It's never gone further than, yes, the fire department comes through the needle, but we don't go inside. Um, so, I mean, things like that we need to know about. And this woman wanted to make sure that the council does get a response about what is the protocol when fires do happen? What does, who are the targeted staff within the needle who are responsible for fires and putting out fires? And exactly how does that, um, work? Um, let me see what this one is. Um, oversight. One thing I have noticed is that a lot of the laboratories in the CDC, um, they have somewhat of an oversight and they have Congress. Um, but they really don't have, um, thorough oversight. And I'm very worried about our needle, um, and who oversees that? It seems like everybody falls under, you know, everybody's connected some kind of way. Where, you know, where we have the, the letter where the Boston Public Health, John Ariback is like, oh, yeah, build the thing. We got you. We'll give you support. And then, you know, the mayor is, is for it and everybody's like, you know, as far as, I didn't really mean the mayor, but as far as different entities and different procedures that we have to go through, it just seems like everybody is connected, um, one way or another to BU or to the needle. Um, and it's hard to fight it because it's hard to get two counselors who will listen, um, to what we have to say and really feel, um, what we're feeling about this laboratory. So that is a big, a big problem that there, you know, everybody's just seems to be connected one way or another. Now John Ariback is, what, the policy person at the CDC? So, I mean, it's, it's just too close for comfort for everything as far as permits and everything else. Um, but I guess there's nothing that we can do about it, but it's something that we need to really think about. Um, also, there's issues in the South End around the neighborhood about gentrification of BU building more than 700, um, units, um, of housing that are not affordable to residents. And, um, you can see, um, the places that, um, Boston University is buying up, but there really isn't any subsidy housing for people who live around in that area. And I think that's a problem, um, as well. And I, I think that's all I really want to say. I, I, I think that we should really consider, um, the moratorium for a safety reason. I think it shows good faith that the council, um, the state, um, and some of the federal government are trying to understand why there are 10,000 of these labs. When we started, there was only three in the country. Now they can't even count how many Level 4 labs that there are that does this type of research. And that's why we say, why is this one needed? It's not open. It hasn't started. People are doing research all over the place. Why is this needle needed so bad when there are other facilities that have Level 4, um, research?
I think that's a great note to tapstone on, Claire.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and I think the last thing is, is that, and I don't mean to be very personal, but I think, you know, this gentleman right here, if he could be a little nicer to people within the community when they do come to meetings, um, I've had a lot of complaints about people feeling, you know, that they felt like they were treated badly, um, not even considering our city council. Um, then when he came, uh, to the meeting and he called him out of his name. But I have spoken to people who have been in meetings with him and just don't want to go back and have to deal with that. Um, so I hope that that is an issue that can be resolved, um, because maybe that will open some of your doors. And the other thing is, I wish that you would also start back with the community meeting, back at Cathedral. Um, you did get good turnout. You did get people who, you know, were pushing questions, but they weren't angry people. It was like we were working things out together. Um, and if you didn't have the answer, of course, we, you know, bitched and moaned. But we knew at least we were coming back next week and you said that we would talk about it again and then we worked together. And I think that that's something that, you know, that you really need to do and we would appreciate it. So I think, um, I think that's it. And I ju, I just want to say thank you very much. And I know it's been hard to keep calling these hearings, um, but I don't stand alone. I really don't stand alone. And this is not what I figured I'd be doing for the next 14 years of my life. Um, but there's a reason why God gets me up in the morning to do this. Because I really don't want to do it, but for some ungodly reason, I've been, I do it, you know? And, um, and I will continue to do it, um, until there's a resolution, um, to our issue. And that is lack of safety. Um, so that's it.
All right, Claire.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And, um, you know, we will be encouraging, um, all of our...
Thank you.
Our colleagues who do schedule conflicts that couldn't be here this evening or longstanding commitments, um, we will encourage them to watch the hearing in its entirety, uh, or at least to, um, extract the public testimony.
Yes.
Uh, we also took copious notes of, um, your follow-up questions and, and issues that you were raised. Then, um, we will follow up through our own correspondence, uh, directly to the, the most appropriate entities, whether it's the Health Commission, uh, more to Boston University directly, okay?
Or maybe, uh, you know, I've heard, I heard something of a, of a working group, um, a, a process called a working group.
The least sponsored order, so I'm gonna have him, you know.
But I mean, that might be something to kind of get us in the same room because at times we can't even be in the same room.
Sure.
You know what I mean? So if, if there was some sort of way, there's no venue other than to be here or, you know, if we schedule a meeting, they've always been open to meet with us. But I think we need to kind of talk a little bit more and understand each other a little bit more and see what comes out.
To that, he's gonna close us out with a final statement and, uh, perhaps some thoughts about next step.
Thank you. Um, I, I wanna, uh, I wanna thank Claire. I wanna thank, uh, the Roxbury Safety Net Coalition. I wanna thank all of the experts. Um, and also I wanna acknowledge my friends in the Mass Nur, Mass Nurses Association. Um, I, I think, uh, interestingly, we, um, have had a lot of scientists here today and I'm very happy I'm not one. I think that, um, the Boston City Council is charged with making decisions that make sense whether or not, uh, individuals in our city, um, have, uh, advanced degrees or, or no degree, um, at all. Um, I've always found that, uh, subject matter expertise, uh, in our neighborhoods actually come from the people who actually live there, um, who reside there, uh, who lay their heads, uh, there. Um, I think that there are still major questions, um, around, uh, safety for all residents of the city of Boston uh, when it comes to, uh, the sighting of this facility. Um, I also, uh, interestingly, uh, heard, uh, um, things that were kind of con, contrary to my understanding of, um, of, uh, grants, uh, NIH as well as CDC grants, uh, around the, um, the, uh, amount of benefit that an institution, um, gets. I guess, um, I would say that we, uh, have a lot of work to do, uh, in the future, um, a, as noted. Um, we, none of these institutions are in, um, a bubble, uh, literally. Um, they actually reside in the city of Boston. And I think it's absolutely critical, um, that we, uh, move forward and do what's best for, uh, the most people in the city of Boston. Um, I think there are still, uh, gaps, um, that, uh, need to, uh, be answered. Uh, there was, uh, even, uh, today when it came to, uh, who gets notified? How they would get notified and what would be the trigger in which they are, are notified? Those are, uh, questions. I think there is also a, a component, um, around individuals, uh, who are willing, able and actually very qualified to be on advisory boards, um, but, um, have not bought into, uh, the, uh, this, this sighting, um, who should actually be, uh, placed there. So I, again, I want to thank everyone for coming. I want to actually thank, um, also the members of, uh, Boston University, um, and their staff also for coming, uh, to have this conversation, um, as well as the Boston Public Health Commission. I want to thank, um, Carrie, uh, who's on our, our staff and, and, um, uh, also... And, uh, as well as Daisy on, uh, our staff, um, who are, are here, uh, burning the midnight oil with us. Um, this is, uh, again, uh, a longer conversation, uh, that we must continue to have, um, uh, for the people in the, in particular in that neighborhood, but also the people of the city of Boston, um, to feel safe. I still, um, have not bought into, uh, the fact that this will cause irreparable harm, um, based on the fact, uh, that our friends right across the bridge, um, have blockbuster, uh, increases in the number of, um, of institutions and, and commercialization that's actually happening, uh, in Cambridge. Um, where I would note that they have a, uh, a legal, uh, nuclear reactor, um, but Level 4, uh, testing is actually not legal. Um, so again, I want to thank, uh, Counselress Presley, uh, for, uh, giving her time, um, as well as, uh, expediting this hearing. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.